Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Work Session Financial Sustainability Plan, Tuesday, June 28, 2022. First, we're going to do a call to order, and I'm going to have our city clerk start roll call.
Mayor Kaylee Clark?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine?
Present.
All right. Thank you so much. Deputy Mayor Lamb, will you do our Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you. Thank you so much. I will undertake a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
I motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 By a vote of 5-0, we have approved tonight's agenda. First up, we do have public comment. I'm not sure if we have any in the room. Looks like we do have one. And then we will move to our Zoom public commenter. So, James, go ahead. Sorry, we'll wait for the mic and the timer.
James Easton, Samamish, Washington. So, when my son wakes up in the morning every day, he asks Alexa for the weather, and he always asks for a joke or for a riddle. His latest riddle to me was, "What has a bank but no money?" I said, "Oh, son, that's an easy one. It's the city of Samamish." He said, "No, Dad, it's a river." And I said, "No, son, Samamish has lots of banks, but they have no money." And he said, "No, no, it's a river, Dad." And I said, "Okay, I'm going to appeal to the City Council tonight. If they tell me my answer is all right, I'm going to come back to you." And he said, "No, Dad, you need to appeal to the mayor." So, Mayor, I'm here for an appeal. What do you think? My answer legitimate? Well, I don't know. I don't want to get my son's feelings hurt, so I will say that no, it probably isn't. So, my son's right, it is a river. But money is something that we need to accomplish, whatever vision the City Council has to set out. And being for such a rich city, as you'll probably see tonight in the packet, we have very limited supply of money, probably per capita or per the income capita, probably one of the lowest maybe in the country based on what the residents around us make. So, I would just really suggest some really creative ways and creative thinking to increase the revenue streams of the city to be able to accomplish the vision. And with that said, I know this is something that, you know, may cost a little bit of money, but, you know, we spent so much on this transportation, you know, being that being a huge concern. And with the temporary improvement plan that we're trying to form, it really just gets to me that we're talking about, you know, increasing our transit, getting people to light rail, but yet one of the biggest expenditures for our city residents is funding ST 1, 2, and 3, and for having a parking ride blown way off into at least 2050, and we're going to Sound Transit, you know, asking to pay them to improve our bus service. And for that amount of money that we put into those, I just think it's worth an allocation in our budget to complete a study every year. Every single year, we'll complete a study to estimate how much money our residents are paying for all these programs. What are we giving Sound Transit every year and not getting back? I think once we have that number and we're able to focus on that, I think maybe we won't be so hesitant to ask for something for our return on investment in some of these programs to improve transit. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. I think that's it for Inside the Chambers. I'll pass it to our city clerk.
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. For those attendees who are joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star 9. I see one hand raised. I will transfer them. Sorry, there's two now. So, I'll promote you in the order that you have raised your hands.
Hopefully, you can hear me okay. Okay. Hello, I'm Sid Gupta. I'm at 4309 243rd Avenue Southeast, Samamish. I don't have video for you tonight, but hopefully you can hear me okay. I know the council is going to be discussing sources of revenue today, and as noted in the packet, I think a utility tax is an option worth exploring. Both of our nearest neighbors, Isqwa and Redmond, have a utility tax. Isqwa's 2022 budget shows over $5 million in revenue from theirs, which I believe is set at 6%. And I think there are a little over 16,000 households in Isqwa compared to just over 21,000 in Samamish. So, even a modest utility tax could prove a significant source of revenue to the city. Additionally, utility tax can, to an extent, encourage conservation, as the less usage there is in a household, the less effect it will have manually. In comparison, homeowners do not have control over their property tax burden, so an increase there would worsen the trend of pricing occupants out of their homes in Samamish. I know nobody likes easing taxes. I know revenue is always a thorny subject, but especially with the city wanting to pursue more affordable housing options, I think a utility tax would be a more desirable option than potentially raising them to try and make up some of that revenue. So, I'll keep it really brief here tonight. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Paula Harper Christensen, and I've lived in Samamish for 35 years. Samamish is in need of mental health services. Years ago, I asked the council to consider budget funding to support the hiring of two mental health counselors. That didn't happen, and then we went into a pandemic. COVID-19, which is still here, causing further prevalence of anxiety and depression, increased over 25% over the last two years. So, we've had a dramatic increase in people suffering mentally. It's been the pandemic has unprecedented stress caused by social isolation, the constraints on people's ability to work, and we have not been able to seek the support of our loved ones or engage in our community. It's getting better, but we're still suffering. Loneliness, fear, fear of infection, suffering, death of loved ones, grief after bereavement, financial worries, our stressors, leading to anxiety and depression. Among health workers, exhaustion has been a major trigger of suicidal thinking. Young people, children and teens, and women have been hit really hard. More mental health services are needed in Samamish. The American Rescue Plan of 2021, ARPA, provides funding for state and local governments for COVID services. Now, I'm not financial, I don't have a financial background, but if I'm looking at this correctly, Samamish still has unspent funds, 2.3 million, which could still be used to assist our community. Cities can use ARPA funds for support of public health, address the negative impact caused by a public health emergency, replace lost public sector revenue, provide minimum pay for essential workers, and invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. There's also the CARES Act, which it looks like we still have some unspent money, which could be used for homeowner assistance fund, emergency rental assistance program, small business credit. So, what I'm asking tonight is that the council looks into the ways that this unspent fund, funds, could be used for services to our community, because our community is still struggling. So, for all of you, be well, stay well, and take care. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Is there any further people that would like to give public comment? Please raise your hand. I don't see anyone else raising their hands.
All right. Thank you all so much. So, next up, we have our first presentation, which is on the 2022 financial update. So, I think I'll pass this to Erin.
Switching mics here. Good evening, Council. Erin Nanton, I'm the Assistant City Manager, and also with me this evening is Chris Giannini, Deputy Finance Director. Initially, we're just going to go over, as a reminder, kind of financial performance both last year and the first quarter financial report. These are reports that already have been sent out, and we've had the opportunity to look through and review in the earlier months of the year. But as we get and approach the budget timeline, we just want to take a look as a reminder of where we're at and where we ended the year, as well as what activities are going All right. So, first off, 2021 year-end performance, and we're looking at the general fund. So, there's some reference notes on this slide that refer you to those reports that I mentioned. Those are also posted on the city website, all of our financial management reports, both for the entire last year, 2021, as well as quarterly as we go through 2022. Those are going to be reported there. So, just highlighting some of those results here in the general fund, which is our fund number 001. On the revenue side, our revenues for 2021 did exceed the budgeted estimates by 3.1 million in total for the year, and the primary driver of that was sales tax that came in 2.4 million over budget. On the expenditure side, expenditures were under budget by 9.3 million in total as of December 31, 2021. And you see on this slide the breakdown of some of those larger items where expenditures were coming in under the budget expectations, and you'd likely heard about these as we progressed all through last year, but this is just kind of the final report where it's summarizing those different items. So, again, personnel savings due to vacancies that continued through 2021 and are continuing into 2022. We had pavement overlay under budget. Police services, their inter-local contract was under budget, as well as the entire police services department, the other line items there. Some of the unspent COVID-19-related items, those designated funds for 2021 by 1231, those budgeted items had a underrun of 670,000. And then legal costs were under the 2021 budget number. So, the grand total for general fund ending balance at the end of 2021, 44.8 million. So, that was the general fund picture. For all of the other city funds, so we kind of grouped them all together for this summary slide, so 10 other city funds that have various restricted sources of revenue and different purposes of those expenditures, but in total, ARPA is one of those separate funds that we're tracking in 2022. So, recall, the first tranche of ARPA funding was received for the revenue loss recovery justification that was given to the U.S. Treasury for those funds in 2022. Then we had the Surface Water Operating Fund revenues, the capital fund revenues. Picture REIT, which is real estate excise tax, exceeded budget by 4.1 million. This is a total recap of the year. Again, you heard that message as we were going through last year and probably saw that in those reports, those regular reports as well. Grant revenues, so these were the timing of when those grants were received. Two large grants were the Phase 2 of Isiqua Fall City Road. That was a one and a half million. The other one and a half was the Conservation Futures Grant, so the timing of when those were received. Capital funds expenditures, so quick breakdown of those four large capital improvement plan budgets. In the general government budget, it was under budget by 2.5 million, so call that we budget there. And the timing of those capital projects can move from prior year to current year as the project continues from one fiscal calendar year to another. So, this is just showing as of 1231, that budget wasn't spent for facilities and parks, transportation, each of those separate capital funds. So, any fund balance, taking out all the general fund, so excluding that one, but all the other funds added up to 59 million. A caveat on that 59 million, it is restricted for the purposes of these separate funds. So, the purposes of each of those funds has a fund creation and what restricted revenues go in and what expenditures can occur in each of those. So, there's a restriction on that fund balance in that fashion. Again, references there that these documents are available on the city's website. Quick reminder, there was some discussion last October, November regarding the operations budget and digging a little deeper into that year-over-year look, the inflection point there. So, 2022, as the budget was set in November '21, the 2022 budget now, so we're getting beyond '21 performance, looking at '22 portion of the budget. Revenues were budgeted at 51.8 million in the general fund. Total 2022 expenditures were budgeted at 55 million. When we roll out the one-time capital transfers that were budgeted out of that 55 million, and that amount was 3.35 million that had planned to be budgeted and transfers to the Maintenance Operations Center, that renovation project, that's what we are transferring from the general fund over to the capital fund for. After you exclude that from the expenditures, the net operating expenditures then are 51.6 million. So, the difference there is just 130,000, just over 130,000, and that's referred to as the gap in operations. So, that's how the budget picture looked for 2022 and still looks budget-wise. So, then we also track performance, budget-to-actual variance performance as we progress through the 2022 period. Those quarterly reports are posted on the city website as we reach each of those quarterly points throughout the year. First quarter is already out. Second quarter would be coming out in mid-July. Those would be posted, so that's when you'll see a next update to these quarterly performance. Some of the things that we're watching from the first quarter report, revenues are on target. It's early in the year through first quarter, would be March of 2022. So, we're seeing that continued early positive news on sales taxes as those continue to come in at the 2021 levels, which you recall were at a higher level than budget expectations were in '21. So, it's a good progress on sales taxes as those continue to come in. And then expenditures, they're below budget currently through the first quarter, again, related to the vacancy rates that continue to remain. So, there's savings in salaries and benefits there, but those are related to position vacancies at the city. The police contract, this one is one I often get asked about just because of the timing. So, the way the timing works with the King County Sheriff's Office is for the first five months of the year, that bill is held, once King County gets it, they send it to the city after that, and typically that fifth or sixth month, and it's done to catch up the city for those first five months. So, when you're looking at the reports and that particular line item, you won't see a charge for that King County Sheriff's Office for January, February, March, all the way up until June, and then they catch up those first five months all in June. So, we did receive that invoice. It's being processed, but that's in the second quarter report. That'll all reflect the full six months of the year, but if you're looking at those reports monthly, you'll notice that timing variance is in there. Related to all other funds, so surface water fees are on target to meet budget. Again, recall, the collection of surface water fees are at the same time as property tax, so in April and October, so two points throughout the year, and we typically get those in. Capital revenues, we are seeing a slowing on the real estate excise tax. It's running below the 2021 levels. That's likely related to lower inventory on homes for sale. The prices of homes have remained high and increasing, kind of stabilizing, I guess you would say, more recently. But the inventory obviously is slowing there, so the total amounts collected on the transaction sales are running below the budget expectations in 2022. So, traffic and parks impact fees, again, those are collected as those permits applications are made and come in, and those are running below the current budget expectations. So, for both REIT and development activity, there is a seasonality nature to that as well. So, typically, summer season is when you start seeing those levels of activity pick up. So, some of that could be expected to show a higher pace of increase as we move into the summer months here and those numbers come in. So, that's what we're seeing in the early 1Q report. We'll transition over to just the higher-level financial policies review, which was one of the discussion items that we wanted to have tonight. So, this is an opportunity for council to hear kind of the discussion that has happened around the general fund strategic reserve. So, recall that there is a current ordinance that City Council has established, the strategic reserve, which the method is 10% of the annually budgeted general fund revenues. So, in 2022, that equates to 5.2 million. So, that's the amount and the calculation of that strategic reserve. There's been several discussions, and further information's been gathered. So, we had the GFOA recommendations, the Government Finance Officers Association. Included in the packet is also an issue paper on reserves that has the GFOA guidelines and has a link to that, and then their GFOA site has more information on what they would recommend. Given they're a national advisory body, they're recommending across the board. They're not necessarily specific to Washington or municipalities in Washington. This is a general national recommendation, which is why they use the language that they would recommend tailoring the reserve requirement to the specific city circumstances. So, that's their general guidance in that area. They say it can be based on either revenues or expenditures, and they recommend a minimum of two months. So, that's kind of their general statement that they make on reserve levels. So, there's some other considerations of how we interpret that and why then the interim city manager is making the recommendation of a three-month general fund operating expenditures reserve. So, that's 25%. Again, you see that on the slide. That equates to 12.9 million. So, jumping to some of that considerations piece for a moment, so you recall, GFOA is recommending the two months, but they're saying you tailor it towards your specific city circumstances. For Samamish, Samamish is highly property tax dependent from a revenue standpoint. So, 67% of our operating revenues is related to property tax, and that's received in both April and October. So, the timing of when that major source of revenue coming in happens is unique to Samamish, right? So, we're moving from a national down to a state, down to a city within a state with a property tax dependency. And so, that's what the factors are that are in play for Samamish and where the 25% idea comes up, because you're covering those first four months. That's what the reserves is planned to be able to reserve for, four months of operating before you get your first big chunk of major revenues in. So, that's a consideration for Samamish in setting it at the 25% level. You may also recall, Samamish hired a consultant last fall, Management Partners, and they're going to be with us tonight on the second piece, but their recommendation was to change the basis of the strategic reserve calculation to two months of expenditures. So, they were looking at switching it from the revenue standard to an expenditure standard, and that was kind of based on their work back then. And so, just to put it in calculation terms, so we have currently 5.2 million based off our 10% of revenues. The GFOA and city manager recommendation, there is the 25%, that's 12.9 million. There's also consultant recommendation of the 8.6 million that's kind of in the middle of both of those. So, the GFOA and the consultant are on the expenditure basis. Our current policy is on the revenue basis. So, that kind of is walking through the strategic reserve piece, and then this is an opportunity for council, if they want to discuss or provide, you know, direction to the interim city manager, they can do that on the current reserve level, or if you either affirm or change, or if you need more information, that kind of.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, Council, open it up for any questions. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. I have some questions. I'm not sure, I think, just in terms of providing any direction, I'd really like to see the presentation from Management Partners before we go there, but I did have some questions. So, 67% of our operating revenue is from property taxes, which we get at the end of April, but how much of our operating expenditures are police services? I'm thinking it's roughly about 20% to 25%, right?
Yeah, it's about 25%.
Right. And that, we don't pay until July, right? So, from a timing perspective, a big chunk of our expenditures don't come until after that first chunk of property tax, right, would come in?
That's true for the King County Sheriff's Office, as long as we continue that contractual relationship.
Right. Okay. And then, as we're obviously in a period of very high inflation, is there any general guidance, like, while I want to be conservative, I also know that money sitting in our fund is losing value with every passing day when we have such high inflation. So, is there any general recommendations in a period of extremely high inflation where to adjust your reserves?
Yeah, I'm not sure that there's any, I don't recall GFOA weighing in on the inflation-based piece in their recommendations for operating reserves. The notion that connects for me is, so this is Washington state-specific as well, is the 1% cap on property taxes. So, there is, regardless of what inflation actually does and experiences, there is a cap in the state of Washington on cities that they can only increase by 1%. It's actually the greater of 1% or the increase in the implicit price deflator. That's the statute, but it's basically a maximum of 1%.
Right.
And as you know, the inflationary matrices are way above 1% currently.
Yes, they're a wee bit above 1% right now, indeed. And then, if I recall from, you know, just from our past, because we do have a big chunk of our revenue is from property taxes, we actually have a fairly somewhat recession-proof tax base as well, right? So, even when we had the last recession, even though that had an impact on housing prices, our revenue stayed probably more steady than most, correct?
Absolutely. Yes. Property taxes is considered a basic and stable source of revenue, which was some of the backing behind that original setting of the ordinance for the strategic reserve based on 10% of operating revenues, because of that high portion of property tax.
Okay. Because I like the idea of us basing our reserve on our expenditures, not our revenues. That feels like it makes more sense, right? You got to have enough money in the bank to pay the bills or some amount of the bills. But I'm not sure, I'm not sure how I feel about going all the way to three months. Two months is feeling a little better to me. But again, I'd like to see the other presentation before we have to give any formal direction. That would be my preference. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Howell.
Thank you, Mayor. My question has to do with the number, the sales tax of 2 point, we got 2.4 million over budget. By any chance, is that sales tax actually broken out? Do we know what kind of sales tax? That is, is it from purchases that were made off the plateau? That's prime purchases, that Amazon coming on? Is it from our own local businesses? I'd like to understand the breakout of that number so that I understand the trend for that. Is that possible?
We can give you by category. So I can say there's online sales. I can't name particular businesses and entities. But I would say, yes, online sales activity and so, you know, remote delivery has increased throughout the pandemic for this area. And so that's helped bolster the sales tax receipts to the city. It's been partially offset by new construction activity has waned a bit from residential housing. So as lumber drops, that would be a source of local sales tax revenue. A small portion of that, the local sales tax piece. And as the amount of those occurrences wanes, so would the receipts from that. So it's been offset a little bit by that. But still very strong sales tax numbers coming in.
Okay, well, I could believe that that number will stay strong, you know, that in general. I think that that's probably a fair estimate. And what I'm trying to kind of determine is how is it going to look in the future? Because as we look at our own business base here in Samamish, for example, I look to how do we bolster what we have? How do we not only maintain what we have, but grow it and get more benefit from that, frankly? So that we expand the revenue base and can begin to count on that being not be just an overage, but to be actually start to forecast it and be part of our number. So that's why I was asking the question around trending. Personally, I am in favor of definitely keeping, well, looking to measuring our reserves by expenditures. I do want the 25%. I mean, that's where I'm headed, just on the fiscally conservative side. But to do that, we ain't going to get there from here unless we start doing some other stuff too, which is later in your presentation. But that's also what I'm looking at. What else can I milk for that revenue bucket?
Yeah, related to the sales tax piece, hang on to that idea. Because Management Partners, when they're looking at the forecasting assumptions, you'll note they are updating those sales tax assumption pieces based off of the more current activity levels that we're seeing on sales taxes. So that'll be an update as part of their presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Deputy Mayor Lamb.
So I'm wondering for the reserve, have we used reserves in the past? I'm just noting that line in the issue paper saying that the good use of funds would show that it fluctuates rather than it just sits there dormant, which means that it's actually not really needed. So I'm curious whether or not it's been used in the past. And then how do we project that we would be using any of the reserves? So it's not sitting dormant if we go to, say, three months?
Right, so that's part of the, when you're setting the council's budget for the future period, then you're looking at all of those expenses. As far as the use of the reserves, I can go back to that gap slide for a second. Where we are looking at budgeted expenditures were 55 million. That 3.3 million that you're taking out of operations, transferring over to capital, that could be considered a use of reserves there. Because that would be a portion that is coming out of reserves to fund that capital project. So as you transfer funding from operations to capital, that could be construed as a type of use of reserves. So when you're setting a reserve mark, a policy, that's your initial target. And then as the rest of the budget gets filled in from the budget discussions that are going to take place over the next several months, six months here, both on the operating and capital side, and those inputs are known, that's what shows how close you are to that measuring mark of where you want to set your ending strategic reserve to be at, whether it's at a 10% level, 25% level, or whatever level.
And our interim city manager, I think, has a little follow-up.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could really quickly, I want to make the distinction between what we would hold under this policy and strategic reserve versus what is sitting in fund balance and that we might use of fund balance. So in essence, it's of that 44.8 million that is in the fund balance right now, how much do you want to set aside basically as your, call it whatever you want, a rainy day fund to make sure that if you all choose, not that I would recommend it, but if you all choose, you want to say, we want to use all the rest of that to do something? How much do you want to hold out from that to say, we're not going to touch that piece because that is our, in case of emergency, break glass, use this money fund? And I think that's, from my perspective, be a little more conservative on what you hold truly in reserve versus what is in fund balance and is not budgeted. That's kind of the distinction where I would draw the line.
Thanks, Aaron. Go ahead, Councilmember Treeen.
Thank you, Mayor. So Aaron, if you were to do 15% of the general fund's revenues, is that pretty close to the two months of expenditures? Less transfers of that? I'm looking to see, is that about 8.6 million? Is it?
Yeah, so if you're looking at 5.2 and add 50% to that, right? So you're adding two and a half to get to 15%. So that's just a rough, you're about 7.7.
Yeah, because when I came into this, I was thinking, shoot, just raise it up to 15%. But kind of leaning then, without seeing the presentation from the Management Partners recommendation that's going to come, that revenues of two months at 16.67% of expenditures seems like the direction that I'd be leaning towards at this point. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just finish off unless anyone else has anything. I definitely concur. I love tying it to our expenditures. And I'm leaning towards that two months only because I think I need a little more information. So I don't know if it's a good spot unless anyone has anything to move on to that. Maybe if we could come back, if that works?
Sure, we can absolutely come back. So we'll leave this conversation for now. And then the next policy item we want to cover before we get to Management Partners is the REIT allocation. So this is another policy allocation that council does internally. So this isn't required by the state or some other. There are eligible uses of REIT, real estate excise tax. But how the City of Samamish treats that, we send 50% into the Parks Capital Fund and 50% into the Transportation Capital Fund. So this is the opportunity where we were wanting to make you aware that that's how the city does that. That's been our past practice. And we would plan to continue that unless council wants to do something different. But we want you to be aware that that is a kind of a local policy decision or direction that you could provide if you want to do something different.
All right, great. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I think for now, I like it that way. I mean, our parks are jewels, right? I mean, people love our parks, particularly during the pandemic. They've been a salvation for people. So I do not want to see us take that funding away from our parks. Again, I think we need to see the overall budget and the overall plans and what we're going to look at from other revenue sources. But I would, whatever we do, I don't want to be taking money away from our parks. I guess one question, just in general though, or maybe just confirming. My question is, when you showed the operating budget and the operating revenues, we took out that 3 point whatever million for the transfer. Was that the only capital expenditure that's in that 50, what was it, 55 million number? Or were there other capital expenditures in there?
So there are some capital expenditures in terms of equipment used in operations.
Okay.
But that's the only transfer from operations to a capital fund.
Okay.
So that's kind of a distinction. But it's, so it's, there are capital dollars in there, but they're smaller, much smaller than the 3.3 million.
Got it. And Aaron, just to clarify for, you know, folks watching at home and for some of our new council members, historically, right, Samamish has funded many capital projects out of the general fund. Is that inaccurate? I see you shaking your head. I want to make sure everybody.
I want to make sure you were finished there. Yes, absolutely. That has been the pattern of Samamish is that we are investing out of our general fund operations into our capital infrastructure and in multiple areas. So you mentioned parks, transportation, general, those three large capital fund buckets that we just talked about. Those have been investments over the years and over time.
Great. And I just, you know, I mean, as we kind of head into the budget season, for me personally, I would love to see us have a, maybe a thicker line there between, you know, the capital expenditures and how we want to fund those versus the operations expenditures and how we fund those. I think it's fine for us to transfer money back and forth when we have extra in one place. But I think our plans should be, right, that our operations should be funded from our recurring sources of revenue and that our capital expenditures should primarily be funded very deliberately, right? From whatever source of revenue that's going to be. Because I think it blurs the line a lot. I know like four years ago, there was a lot of question about when do we have the crossover of when our, you know, expenditures exceed our revenues and stuff. And it's a pretty fuzzy line when we're transferring money back and forth a lot. So for me, I think that would really help. Because when we look at what kinds of taxes, if any, we want to add, we may consider, you know, if it's a capital expenditure that we're trying to fund and it's something that has a very finite timeline, then we may look at a finite revenue source as opposed to something that we implement that could be around for a very, very long time. So that's just a kind of a personal preference for me. It makes it, I like simpler math, right?
I'm with you on that, absolutely. I think the establishment of the six-year capital plans are also very helpful in creating that line. So as a TCIP six-year plan gets adopted by council resolution, as you establish your parks six-year look, whether it's the pro-plan or something more formal in the way of a six-year capital facility plan. Same thing for facilities capital. As those planning documents get adopted by council via resolution, that's helpful in setting those lines so you get some parameters around the capital spending plan over a six-year horizon.
Excellent. Thanks, Aaron. Really appreciate it.
Great. Councilmember Howell.
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron, I too want to keep the way it is established right now. I don't want the funds fungible. Okay, because that's a thing. With our increased expenditures in maintenance and parks and so forth, we would absolutely have to lock down the source for funding it. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Treeen.
Yeah, thank you. Stay the course. Current council policy is good. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lamb.
I support maintaining what we have right now, too.
I also support. Looks good.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
That was quick. All right. So. So Management Partners will be joining us as we kind of transition into the more of the other council considerations when we're starting to get into the long-term forecasting sustainability project. So it was mentioned earlier, utility tax obviously is one of those remaining sources. It's primarily for operations. Just a general review, utility taxes typically cities within the state of Washington have three primary sources of revenue, property tax, sales tax, and utility tax. The City of Samamish has not ever since its corporation imposed a utility tax. Now, their point on utility tax, the utility tax is on the utility companies. It's not on the individuals. But there is recognition that the reality is the utility companies will pass along that tax to their consumers of that utility. So it's just kind of how that utility tax operates. I mention that because if the city chooses to establish a utility tax, your regulation is on the utility, not on the individual. So when you're setting up programs, it's just something to keep in mind on how that interaction works for the utility providers. There's some other notes on this slide. I'll just kind of, I think you're all aware of these. These are reminders of things that have come up as we had talked about revenue options in the transportation capital meetings that we've been having earlier this year. You're all aware of the 1% property tax lid cap there on an annual increase for the regular property tax rate. Property tax action won't come before council until the fall. And so, but this is just an early reminder that that's an annual cap that's always there. So it's a max of 1%. The state law does sometimes come in. It says the increase in the IPD, which is the implicit price deflator, or 1%. We have had years in the past where the IPD was less than 1%. In those cases, it can't even increase by 1%. It has to increase by less than 1%. So we track that and let you know which lid is in place for the city as we approach those fall meetings where there's a public hearing on property tax levy as well as the setting of the property tax levy for the next tax year. So that's property taxes. So let's go ahead and transition then to Management Partners. And we've invited Steve Toller is the Management Partners consultant. There he is.
Great.
Okay, Steve, you're up.
Any words of wisdom, Aaron, before I start?
I think, I think if you're ready, you can go ahead and jump right in there, Steve. We can hear you fine.
Good evening, Mayor Clark and councilmembers. It's nice to see you all again, albeit this way. For, all of you know me, but for those that may be watching that don't, I'm Steve Toller. I'm a partner with Management Partners. I'm joined tonight by Sam Lieberman, who's our project manager on this assignment. And both of us will be presenting to you tonight kind of what the fruits of our labor in terms of the update of the fiscal model that we did, as well as kind of giving you the benefits of all the conversations that we have had of the current preliminary, very preliminary analysis that we've done in terms of what different budget strategies there might be should the fiscal model show that there's a long-term gap. So with that, let me bring up the slide deck here, which I believe you're all are able to see now. And so what we'll do is, well, we're going to go through the updated forecast results. Sam is going to do that. And then maybe Mayor Clark, perhaps after we do the forecast results, maybe we'll pause right there and see if there's any questions on that before we then jump into the fiscal sustainability planning section and talk about budget strategy. Because it really does segue this conversation that you've had over the last, you know, few minutes in terms of where you've come from '21, where you are in '22. And then what does that mean with respect to reserves, reserve, you know, projections, and ultimately your reserve policy? So, and then we'll wrap up with next steps. And you all know about us, we basically are, you know, we exclusively consult with local governments. I've been doing work in King County and Washington State throughout the Pacific Northwest and around the United States in a variety of different ways, shapes, and forms, and helped you develop the fiscal model that we presented to the council back in October of 2021. So without further ado, I'm going to pass the baton over to Sam Lieberman. And Sam is going to give you an update on what the financial forecast looks like today. So Sam, take it away.
Thank you, Steve, and thanks for having us. And nice to meet you all. So I know Steve has had the pleasure of getting to talk to you all. I've been working closely with Scott and Aaron and your finance team. Just a little bit of background on the financial forecast before we get into some of the numbers. We originally developed the forecast last year, presented the 10-year forecast in October. We used historical data back to fiscal year 2011 to build a 10-year financial forecast. We have since October updated the financial forecast to include actual revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2021 and projected fiscal year 2022 data, much of which you heard about from Aaron just a few minutes ago. So looking at fiscal year 2021's revenues and expenditures. just a few minutes ago. So looking at fiscal year 2021's revenues and expenditures, you can see in the chart on the left, you know, and as Erin noted, much of your revenues, about 83%, are really taken up by your property tax and your sales and use tax. And as, you know, as Erin noted, your property tax is limited in growth to the 1%. And you've been shooting above projections in sales tax for the last couple of years. And I'll talk about how we've incorporated that into the forecast. On the expenditure side, you're looking at 15% to the sheriff's budget, the sheriff's contract, 15% for the fire contract. And so, you know, because nearly a third of your expenditures is comprised of those contractual services, the general fund is backfilling other infrastructure investments as you see through the capital transfers. The remainder is services provided by people. It's personnel costs, it's services and supplies, those non-personnel operations. And so this is, you know, I think important to keep in mind as we think about addressing the fiscal gap. There's not a lot to sort of move the dial, if you will, right, in the public safety contracts. So really, the movement is going to be on the revenue sides as well as the ways in which services are delivered in King County or in Samamish, excuse me. The any good fiscal model, and this one goes out now to 2032, is really defined by the assumptions that we make. And so I want to walk through a number of the assumptions that we used to build the fiscal model that will go into the long-term charts that we'll look at here in a little bit. So thinking about those key revenue assumptions, we are assuming that the property tax will increase at 1% each year, that you'll take the action to affirmatively increase it by 1%. And we're assuming a modest levy increase of about $300,000 per year. And we base that on on historical increases. We are using the updated projections for sales tax for 2022 at the at the nine and a half million that you heard from from Erin. And we're assuming modest 3% growth over time in the sales and use tax. Transportation tax, similarly, a modest 3% growth. Thinking about franchise fees, we are assuming no growth because we know the trends of folks, cord folks like myself, cord cutting, and, you know, moving away from, you know, the cable providers and such. Recreation fees that took a dip, of course, through the pandemic have been have come back to pre-pandemic levels in in 2021 and '22. And so we will assume and keep our fingers crossed that that doesn't happen again. And we'll see a 3% growth year every year in the recreation fees as well. Community development fees, based on, again, based on 2022 budget estimates, we're assuming 4% growth in the community development fees. Again, that's based on historical growth. And we're not projecting major increases because at the moment, there are no significant development projects in the in the pipeline. We will, we can show a number of different charts that that juxtapose your current financial reserves against various policies. I know that you all just discussed and are still thinking about whether you would move to the 16.67% of expenditures or 25% of expenditures. At the moment, we are showing the 25%, though we can, we can pull up the chart that shows what your reserves look like at 16%. And we have not included any ARPA funds in the general fund forecast pending council decision on how to use those. Thinking about our expenditure assumptions, and those are going to come on two sides, right, the personnel and non-personnel side. So thinking about personnel costs, we know and are making an assumption that salaries in an increase at an average of 4% per year. That, again, is is based on history. And we're also assuming, again, based on what you've seen in Samamish in terms of vacancies, that there will, we've built in a 5% vacancy rate. That is somewhat conservative. I believe the actual vacancy rate has trended a little bit higher in Samamish, but keeping it at 5% keeps us at a little conservative assumption. Healthcare costs at 6% per year, again, based on historical trends and what are currently in your agreements with bargaining units. The public safety contracts, we're assuming relatively significant increases in fiscal year 2020, 2023, and then long-term increases of five, just 5% per year moving forward after that. On the non-personnel side, we're assuming 4% increases on services and supplies through 2025 because we know, and we had been assuming between 2% and 3%. We know with inflation, it's it's a little bit higher than that, and we're hoping that that will level off, or we expect that that will level off after 2025. And so we reduce that assumption to 3%. Capital assets, we're we're assuming a placeholder of about $100, $100,000 per year expenditure for capital assets, again, based on history. We are not assuming that any money will be spent on the unfunded or underfunded capital needs, which we understand to be at nearly $3 million per year. But and we are not making assumptions in the current model that that money will be included in the budget. We are also not assuming any debt service obligations of the general fund. So this, you know, to thinking long-term and thinking about the discussion that Steve will lead around budget strategies, the current model assumes that service levels will be maintained as as they currently are and as they are currently budgeted over the long term. So where does that get us in our our general fund in the 10-year forecast? So the chart that you're looking at here on the left shows your general fund reserves. So as you can see here in 2022, in the red line, your fund balance, you know, as you heard from Erin, is in the is $44 million. And the orange dotted line that we're showing here is the 25% of expenditures reserve goal referenced by Erin. The blue line is the current reserve goal of 10% of revenues. What we assume in this chart on the left is that the fiscal gap, that gap between your budgeted expenditures and our assumptions for revenues, it assumes that you will draw down from your reserves to cover that gap. And so what this shows is by 2028, you will reach your 25% of expenditures reserve goal if you continue to draw down and take no action to adjust your expenditures or revenues to to reduce the gap. You would cross below the 10% of revenues goal in 2029. And by 2030, you would go into negative reserve balance. The chart on the right shows that gap between expenditures and revenues. In 2021 and 2022, that gap is really due to the capital transfers from the general fund. But you can see, as it accumulates by 2032, you're looking at a $13.4 million gap between expenditures and revenues with the current assumptions that we are making in the model that we just discussed and assuming that, again, service levels are maintained. So why do we have a fiscal gap? Well, the property tax, as you've heard now a number of times, is your largest revenue source, and that can only grow at 1% annually without a voter-approved levy lid. And we know that expenditures are increasing at a much faster rate than that. The remaining revenue sources, as discussed, are currently growing between 2% and 4%. And again, our expenditure categories are all increasing faster than the 1% that your property tax is increasing. It's there, your expenditures are increasing faster than the expected remaining revenue sources and the assumptions that we are making there as well. Additionally, the we're not, again, assuming any money towards the unfunded capital needs. They're still not funded in this forecast. And and just to reiterate, the gap that we saw in 2021 and 2022 was due to the one-time transfers in in capital. So with that, let's talk about how we can fix it. What are the what are the budget strategies that we need to, in this scenario, keep your general fund reserves above 25%? And again, you can imagine what that would look like at 16%, right? Your the budget strategies, you'll you're still at 13 million, but you have a little extra time. What we're assuming in the chart on the left and the right is that you would initiate action that would either increase revenue or decrease expenditures, combination thereof, by seven and a half million per year, starting in fiscal year 2027. So not for, you know, five more years, four more years. And that that seven and a half million in either revenue enhancements or expenditure reductions would phase in over a three-year period. And then you would need additional budget strategies beginning in fiscal year 20 fiscal year 31, 2031, of five and a half million. And our model assumes that that five and a half million in budget strategies would phase in over two years. And so, again, the the total upshot, whether it's going to be at 25% or 16.67%, is that you would need around $13 million in budget strategies by fiscal year 2032 to remain above those reserve goals. The budget strategies that that Steve will discuss are all ongoing. These are not one-time reductions in expenditures. These are ongoing reductions in expenditures or increases in revenues. And again, we'll, Steve will will go over a number of those with you here soon. So I just talked a lot. I threw a lot at you. I know that. Steve, if you have anything you want to add before we open the floor to questions, I would I would encourage you to do so.
Yeah, thanks, Sam. And I did want to add that automatically behind the scenes, I was making some changes. So what what would the 16% look like? So we see what this looks like in terms of the, you know, what would the level of budget strategies need to be if your reserve threshold was three months or 25% of annual operating expenditures? Again, the the gap is what the gap is. The question is how quickly and how much will you need to be able to 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 address that? So at the 25% level, seven and a half in '27, and then five and a half in '31. But if we then look at the 16% level, you saw it drop, right? So now your 16% level lower, 16.2 months of annual operating expenditures would be is lower. And therefore, it does buy you a little bit more time, which means that you can draw your reserves down. Not that we'd necessarily want to do this, but you could draw your reserves down a little bit further, such that it would require about $6 million in strategies over a three-year phase in in 2027. But it would still require then an additional $7 million in 2031. Again, you're looking at 13 million no matter what, because that's what you're the 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 long-term gap grows to by the time we hit 2032. It's just that the timing and the magnitude of the of the adjustments that are necessary, in this case, really, we've modeled it based on the magnitude, would reduce from seven and a half down to 6 million. So so that's the policy decision issue related to reserve levels as it relates to then ultimately what you're what you're trying to target and keep as a rainy day. I am, we are very supportive of the concept of using expenditures as the basis by which you develop the revenues. And it sounds like most of you are in in that court as well, because let's face it, if things go haywire, it's revenues that go haywire that could drop very quickly. But your expenditure is a little bit more difficult to kind of move that dial, if you will, right? And so what you're trying to do is you're trying to keep enough money in the piggy bank to be able to provide services such that if your revenue spigot starts to run dry or slows down, it gives you time to be able to adjust. That's really what's at issue here. And so that's why most agencies and why the GFOA recommends it to be based on expenditures. I just wanted to throw that out there in terms of that. So Mayor Clark, I'm going to turn it back to you if you'll take questions. And I don't know if you want me to keep this up. Maybe I'll keep it up as we talk.
Yeah, thank you, Steve and Sam. So council, open it up. And then councilmember Howe.
I'd like to go back to the one statement in your assumptions about the 4% assumed growth. Can you tell me what that 4% encompasses? Does it encompass the notion of any kind of town center? I realize you're basing it on what's currently in the pipeline. And this is future that may that isn't in the pipeline, but is there's aspects of it that are anticipated.
Sam, do you want to address that? You want me to?
It does not include the town center project.
I see. Do we know what the impact of that would be if there was a some projection for that?
Yeah, there's we'll have to work with staff on there's a lot of assumptions that would go into that in terms of what will the ultimate design of that be? What will the ultimate, you know, use of the property be in terms of the mixed-use component? What is the level of construction that they will be putting in? You'll get some one-time kick when it comes to sales taxes, you know? And then as it relates to the community development fees, you get the one-time kick as it relates to building permits and plan check fees and all that. The key question then becomes, on an ongoing basis, what would happen with respect to property taxes? So right now, we're just assuming normal growth of about 300,000 per year. But the incremental development, yeah, assessed value, cost, if you will, as a translate to property tax, would need to be then factored in. Scott, I don't know if you have any further details on that or even Erin?
Sure. Thank you, Erin. I think we discussed this, councilmember, and we decided to not put it into the model because, as Steve pointed out, there were so many unknowns that we that we can't really account for. And we'd be making assumptions that I just I don't feel comfortable that we have enough information to make, recognizing that it will be financially, there will be positives if that if and when that happens. But I don't know, you know, we didn't know when the staging of it, you know, when the sequencing of it would be, how soon would it come online. And so it was pretty hard to drop into the model in a meaningful way. So it's a good point. We just held it out of the model right now because we just couldn't account for how it would actually work.
Well, I'm optimistic that the model is flexible enough that we'd be able to put in some what if, for example.
That's a definitive yes.
So that we'd be able to to actually kind of model that out. So we have a better understanding and just richer detail. For example, if if one of the components was a assisted living center, for example, which is something that would contribute to jobs and to revenue and not to traffic, for example. And so, you know, there there are some possibilities that I'd like to just know that the model we have is something that is flexible enough to withstand us putting in a variety of different components and just see what if, what if we did this? What could it look like? What are the advantages? What are the disadvantages? Because we would like to be able to use it for more than just modeling. It could help us with some decision-making, which could be, you know, a big benefit to the city, too. So that's that is my hope. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Couple of questions. You have a transportation tax listed here. What what is the transportation tax?
That's actually the fuel tax.
Ah, got it. Thank you. I'm like, I don't know that we have a transportation tax. That's that makes makes much more sense. Okay. And I assume that all of the numbers that you're using for your future projections are based on our actuals, not like our past actuals, not our past.
They're based on past actuals for '21, and they're based on budgeted amounts for '22 when it comes to the expenditure side. And on the revenue side, it's assuming what the some of the trends were. The biggest trend change was really in sales tax, where it was looking like it's coming in at nine and a half, which was higher than, I think, the nine million that was in the original, the original budget. Actually, the original budget had 8.3, I think.
Yep. Could you go back to your trend slide where you show kind of our how our fund balance grew for many, many years and how it's been slowly declining?
Yeah, this one here?
It kind of accelerated. Can you, in doing all of your research, what changed in 2020 that took us from? Because I think if you were to go back to 2011 Because I think if you were to go back to 2011, and I would love it if maybe after the meeting you guys could send us, because I think you said you went back to 2011. I'd love to see the the charts all the way back to 2011. But I'm going to speculate that it was pretty much going up a mountain for most of those years, if not all of those years. Do you have any insights into what changed?
Every year, you seem to have these one-time, you know, anomalies that ended up occurring, whether they were one-time revenues that came in because of significant development or, you know, really expenditure savings as a result of of staff vacancies. And I know that a few years ago, a couple of years ago, I believe it was, Aaron, right? That that the the staff in working with council and adopting the budget, the last biennial budget trimmed some of the expenditure assumptions, the the budget assumptions for expenditures were quite conservative. And so therefore, created even, you know, in the past, it was creating some significant expenditure savings. Those have been trimmed down a little bit. But so what what happened in 2020, of course, was the pandemic, and there were some vacancies that occurred as a result of either, you know, slowing down services or especially like on the recreation side, for example, or some of those costs. And so those are what kind of led to some of those increases that were happening each year, construction of, you know, different development projects, the growth that you've seen as a community over time.
Steve, if you could send us some of those details, because I want to say that the growth has slowed down in recent years. So I'm I'm struggling to see that that 2020, I mean, that may be it, and and that's fine. But I'd love to see the detailed numbers on, you know, was it a decrease in revenue or an increase in expenditure or a combination of both? And to really see what tipped those scales? Because I know that the the moratoria kicked in at the end of 2017. And I know that we did see some, you know, residual growth for things that have been grandfathered. But I'm pretty sure that we we didn't, we we saw a decrease in those revenues starting before 2020. And I don't, I thought I saw, and Aaron, I know you were kind of chomping to to maybe jump in, but I thought I saw that, you know, our revenues stayed pretty high even in 2020. So it feels like there might be some increased costs in there somewhere, too?
It's actually the vacancy rates. So we had approved staff increases, FTE adds, but you're continuing to have vacancies there. So the expenditures aren't at what they were budgeted to be. So that helps increase fund balance in those years, the net effect of that. So that's a factor. In the more current years, it's the utilization of the bank capacity. So that came into effect in 2022 with the property tax revenue. So it was collection of that bank capacity would have increased revenues at a greater pace than just the 1% that was increasing in the past. So there's a combination of some of those factors going on as you look over the historical pattern.
Okay. Is there are there any charts that kind of show us some of those so we can? And I ask this not to, you know, not to look back and bemoan the past, but to learn from it, right? So that we can see, you know, was it simply because we increased staffing levels before we increased our revenues? And so that put us on a downward trend or or maybe what some of those other things are? Because I think, Steve, or you guys touched on it, right? Like, we have two choices. We have, we have to close a gap of seven and a half, you know, somewhere between six and seven and a half million dollars a year, starting in 2027. And so we can either increase revenues or decrease expenditures. And I suspect it's always going to be a little bit of both, right? So I'd love to see some of those historic numbers that what changed? What was that pinnacle change in 2020 that sent us on the the downward side?
I'll run some trend analysis for you on that.
Awesome. Plus, you make really cool graphs, so I just want to see more cool graphs. And then I think that was it. Because I think what you said, you clarified that 2022 includes a capital expenditure, but going, starting in 2023, you no longer include any capital transfers. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I didn't know if you're back up. Would anyone else like to go before Councilmember Howe again? Go ahead, go for it.
Okay. So, Steve, I think when we had our little interview and we were bemoaning the fact that our that we had these huge vacancy rates for staff, I'd also asked you if you could look into what was the residents' perception of service level? So I'm pretty sure that half the staff is ready to commit suicide because they were doing 10 jobs, you know, instead of their job. But I was curious as to if there was a perceived loss of service by residents? Because part of this, to Councilmember Stewart's point, there's going to be some adjustments in terms of expenditures. So I want to make sure that this the headcount that's open is appropriate to be open and that we aren't experiencing a service loss or devaluation in the eyes of our residents. Or if there is, is it something that we want to communicate to our residents so that they understand, in order to achieve this level of service, this is what it costs? So that there's an understanding and appreciation for that? So I was wondering if you had any news for me on that.
Councilmember Howe, you're almost making a perfect segue into the fiscal sustainability planning component of this discussion tonight, because that's really where where that is, is, you know, the question becomes, what is the right amount of service levels that you want to have? What is the right level of staffing to provide those services? And so we'll be discussing those as we get to that. But I want to look to Mayor Clark if there's any other questions on the model before we jump to that.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, sorry. One one other question. It kind of goes to that. I think historically, our vacancy rates have been pretty high. And I'm not necessarily suggesting that we should have high vacancy rates, but you assume a 5% vacancy rate. I was just curious, generally, I was trying to do some really fast math, and I couldn't. How much money is that, right? Because I think it was 26% of our operating expense is is salaries and benefits. So
It equates to just about a million dollars, that 5%.
Okay, so if it was 6%, that would be an extra 200,000 a year, roughly.
Right.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yep.
All right, you guys can take it away again.
Okay, here we go. So fiscal sustainability planning. Let's talk a little bit about, before we get into some of the budget strategies, there could be options. And again, I want to just reflect that tonight, we're not necessarily asking you to make a decision on what budget strategy to include to solve the gap. Instead, this is the start of the conversation. We're going to be coming back to you in September, October timeframe, as the budget comes before you, with some analysis of the various strategies that we've identified based on the conversations we've had, not only with with all of you, but as well as with staff and and our own independent research that we've done. But let's just understand, so that we're all seeing from the same page here, in terms of what fiscal sustainability planning is. It's really adopting a set of policies that will address and, you know, any fiscal gap that's identified between revenues and expenditures, which we just looked at, so that you don't have the threat of either insolvency or other things. It's not the same as a concept of bankruptcy or anything like that. That's not what we're talking about here. What we're talking about is what are the fundamental changes that that would need to occur to ensure that you can provide the service levels that you desire to provide sustainably long term? And the the approach that's taken when you do this type of planning is to really take an analysis of each of these different strategies and identifying what the fiscal impact is, as well as the feasibility. We've identified fiscal sustainability in terms of this kind of, you know, graphic here, where we look at what are the different categories of strategies that could be implemented? And there are three that agencies attempt to implement that would try to maintain service levels to the fullest extent possible. It's not necessarily providing the same services the same way, but how do we do it so that it's still the same service level, outcomes-based? And so those are in the areas of either expenditure controls and cost shifts, which are ways to be able to squeeze the nickel a little bit harder, finding ways to be more cost-effective in the the current delivery of services. Service delivery alternatives is a second one, where you look at changing how services are provided, whether it's in-sourcing or outsourcing, or, you know, public partnerships or public-private partnerships, as an example of, you know, service delivery alternative changes. The other, the third area is also is revenue enhancements. How do you grow the the amount of resources that are available to provide services? And those try to maintain service levels to the fullest extent possible. And if the combination of those three strategy areas are not sufficient to be able to address it, then we look at service level reductions. And what does that equate to? And what does that mean in terms of, you know, the the changes in in services? As we do this analysis, we then take a look at at two different components. I mentioned fiscal impact and feasibility. Fiscal impact, how much of a bang for the buck will it will you get with implementing a strategy? And let's face it, the ones that have a greater amount of fiscal impact ongoing each year have a greater potential for success of addressing the 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 gap and and providing, you know, fiscal sustainability to you than those that would have a lower amount of fiscal impact, right? On the other side of the coin, how difficult is it to implement? And difficulty can be a range of different factors, such as, you know, if the community pushback or the technical operational difficulties, maybe it can't be done within the timeframe necessary to to really deal with, you know, the reserve levels and maintaining them at your minimum targets. You know, also disruptive impact of service delivery on the community, as well as the city organization. And we take a look at all those different kind of components, those factors that weigh into that. And basically, what you get is this, you know, colored chart on the right, say, or so, you know, something that has minimal difficulty, minimal pushback, you know, potential to really, you know, be able to be implemented well and and technically being able to be implemented. And it has, you know, a large fiscal impact, which we've identified as over $1 million. That has a pretty high level of of potential success in addressing your fiscal gap, whereas opposed to something that's less than 500,000, that's, you know, low fiscal impact, that would be very difficult to do it. It would have little or no really potential, you know, for for success. And so as we look at different strategies, we consider those. Now, we have not done the full deep dive analysis on each of the individual strategies that we've identified thus far. What we have done, though, is we've identified top level, what we believe some of the fiscal impact could be on some of these, as a way of being able to talk with you about some of these strategies and then identifying, you know, do we want to keep all of them on the table and do the additional analysis for it? Or do we want to, you know, look at maybe stripping some of these off that might have very little in terms of, you know, really addressing the the fiscal impact that you have? And so, again, we talked about the different strategy opportunities here, the those those four categories. We've taken the revenue enhancement piece, though, and we've split them out into two different components. One is, what are the things that council has the ability to do itself as opposed to those that require voter approval? And so we've just kind of grouped those revenue enhancements into that into that area. So let me quickly go through the different strategies that we've identified, based on all of our conversations and the work that we've done with other agencies in King County and Washington State, and 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 our research based on, you know, what your current set of circumstances are. So this first graphic, I'll just kind of navigate you through it, and then I'm going to walk through it very briefly to describe what we've got on here, is you see what the strategies are, and then you see what the potential fiscal impact is. And again, we use the level of basically 500,000 and $1 million. If it's less than 500,000, you have a $13 million gap you're trying to solve. It's going to be low fiscal impact, as opposed to something that is over $1 million, which had the potential for for high fiscal impact. It would take, you know, 13 of those at $1 million to be able to address the gap. So we have just, right now, done kind of high, medium, low, without doing the detailed analysis in terms of coming up with a specific dollar amount. But for example, like, you know, utility tax is one of the budget strategies that could be done councilmanically. It is potentially subject to referendum. So that's just the one caveat with that. But but, you know, utility tax is an option that would have a high fiscal impact. I think Aaron has indicated that it could have upwards of maybe towards $6 million potentially of 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 impact. And so depending on what what was included, we'll be doing that analysis and bringing that back to you if we if the item still remains on the list. So so that's the first item. The second item is a transportation benefit district that would be a VLF fee. You could implement $50 as as a fee. And that could potentially, based on what we're seeing in terms of the number of vehicles that are registered within Semamish, have high fiscal impact for an ongoing basis. Photo traffic enhancement is it's in this category, but it can also be considered really more of a capital improvement that strives to reduce safety costs. So it could be a cost shift, if you will, in terms of helping to pay for some of the the costs associated with your KCSO contract. So in this case, the the concept is that a photo and traffic enhancement or enforcement cameras were indicated or installed in different areas. They could, you know, drive some some revenues that can go to help offset the costs that you're incurring for your safety cost. Franchise fees is another area where you look at either increasing or adding new franchise fees, in this case, potentially for solid wastewater and wastewater. Admissions tax is another option that could be done to, for example, golf courses. Business and occupations tax, something that you currently don't have, that is an option to to increase revenues, as well as business license fees or what we call in Washington State, head taxes, kind of based on the, say, number of employees that are employed within a business. There's the that option there. Some other strategies that council could implement itself is to implement an economic development strategic plan that would target either, you know, development activity, like what we were talking about with the town center, or trying to attract and retain businesses that are sales tax generators that could help grow your sales tax base, which is really what the the next item is as well. But this one is a little bit of a tweak in terms of trying to capture more online sales, given the relatively small amount of retailers that you have, brick and mortar stores in Semamish that are generating sales tax, you know? Is there a way that we can capitalize on the Wayfair decision to allow you to get sales tax coming in from those online sales tax producers who shall remain nameless? The property tax levy is currently in the fiscal model. This would basically be including it as an ongoing and, you know, baseline assumption, almost a revenue policy of of 1%. That 1% is equivalent to about 300, 400,000, I believe. So actually, it's a little bit, hang on, I'm just trying to look that up real quick. It's actually worth more of like about 600,000 or 700,000. So but but we've already incorporated that in the model. So it depends on how you look at that, as to whether or not you want to keep that as a budget strategy. Fees and charges, you know, this would be to making sure that you're increasing the cost recovery, especially in the area of, you know, potentially building permits, planning permits, and other areas that you have there. Park user fees is an option. Rent on leased facilities, whether it's your existing city hall facility or, you know, new by reconfiguring the space that you have and leasing out a floor, for example, of your your building. Those are all, you know, different budget revenue strategies that council has the ability to move forward with. And we have worked with staff to identify broad brush stroke what the fiscal impact is. And we see that those items that are on the left here, including the economic development strategic plan and, you know, trying to increase sales tax base, has, you know, potential for generating more than $500,000 a year, whereas some of these other ones, and property tax levy, again, is rated as low because it's already included in the model. But otherwise, everything else, you know, would probably not have that $500,000 impact per year. Okay, so let me go to the next revenue enhancement. And this is revenue strategies, but would require partnering with the community in terms of of tax changes or increases that would be required. A property tax levy lid lift is is an option some agencies have used, whether they be for just general purposes or whether they be targeted for specific purposes, such as, you know, being able to offset costs for un-unmet or unfunded, you know, capital projects that you have, or, you know, funding a certain service level so that it doesn't be, it's not reduced, like the public safety or parks maintenance, et cetera. So so there's general or specific purpose lid lift lid lifts that could be implemented. The TBD, if that was to move up to the $100 level, that requires a vote. You can do it councilmanically up to 50, but beyond that requires up to 100, requires a voter approval. There's the concept of public facilities districts and general obligation bonds. And some conversations that some of us have had have been, well, how are we going to address this transportation need that you have, you know, in terms of your transportation improvement plan? To the extent that the general fund would have to otherwise, or the streets fund, general fund, streets fund, would otherwise have to kick in fund, streets fund, would otherwise have to kick in to to address those projects, a solution could be that you look at a public facilities district of some sort to either deal with your lighting or parks or facilities infrastructure or general obligation bond to be able to address unfunded or underfunded capital needs. The fiscal impact of all of these areas could be, you know, well more than than a million dollars a year. There are a lot of assumptions that are underneath that, though, in terms of what would the amount of the lift be, for example? How many, you know, vehicles are really registered in Sammamish and, you know, targeting what that that $100 amount would be? And then with respect to the other projects that the general fund would otherwise have to contribute, you know, what is the cost of furl opportunities that exist for the general fund? So this is the area of revenue enhancements. Let me jump over to the expenditure controls and cost shifts. And these are ideas that would help squeeze the nickel harder, ways that we could try to find to be able to be more cost effective in terms of service delivery or shift some of those costs to others to to pay for those services. For example, some agencies have negotiated with their labor groups in in eras of trying to reduce costs and save positions. The concept of shifting, you know, portion of healthcare costs to employees to pick up a certain portion of that, that's one option. Conducting a citywide organizational assessment and reorganizing the structure that you have, perhaps, that might find some opportunities to be able to streamline services, that's another option in this category. Street sweeping fees on solid waste haulers, that would basically be shifting the cost that you're incurring for street sweeping and and putting that with the solid waste haulers. Now, they would, of course, likely turnkey that and and include that in their rates that they would charge to residents and and businesses. But that is, again, another option of trying to take some of those costs and attributing them to areas where that they have created some of those issues that require the street sweeping, for example. Cost allocation of administrative costs to enterprise funds is an area where currently the city is allocating public works, engineering and other costs like that. But when it comes to your city manager's office, city attorney, city clerk's office, administrative services, finance, those costs are not necessarily being shifted over to your enterprise funds. And so the general fund could be offloaded with some of those costs, but it would have the impact of of requiring otherwise being equal, a little bit higher swim fees as a result, for example. So so those, again, are are some options of being able to address the general fund gap. Reviewing staffing levels compared to industry and regional standards and council member Howe, this is to your point about where should we really be in terms of staffing levels, right? So there is the potential to take a look at that and to the extent that service levels would not be degraded, looking at what the proper amount of of staffing is to provide the service levels that are required. These other items that are on the right side here would likely have kind of more lower fiscal impact. Reducing the K C O, you know, officer position, I believe one position is in the neighborhood of about 200,000. You know, you've already, you know, just taken a look at that in terms of what you would be doing in that space. And so, you know, how how many officers could really be potentially done? In this case, this is just eliminating the vacant officer positions that currently exist, and that would be under $500,000 a year, but would have an ongoing impact in terms of public safety service delivery, public private partnerships or special event private partnerships in this case, special event costs, trying to recover those from a lodging tax on on short term rentals, which you already have on the books. You should just not activated that, at least with respect to collections. Simplifying the permit review processes, conducting fleet utilization study, which would be to, you know, take a look at the fleet that you currently have and trying to reduce the amount of fleet based on really, you know, how it's being used. Extending the useful life of technology assets is another option. Or, you know, finding ways to be able to reduce the high turnover rate of staff through different programs that might require some cost perhaps, but could be less costly long run because of all the training that you have to do to get people up to speed and, you know, the service delivery impacts that could exist as a result of that as well. So those were some of the budget strategies that were identified in the expenditure control cost shift section. And the third area, we have service delivery alternatives. You know, you 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 contract already quite a bit of services, you know, when it comes to park maintenance, when it comes to police and fire. So while there are some examples here, and, you know, just again, for purposes of at least putting things on the table, without having done detailed analysis, some agencies look at, you know, the potential for insourcing. We don't necessarily believe that that would be cost effective for you in terms of police or fire, but we have not done a detailed analysis of that. I know that there was an analysis that you did of that several years ago in in that area. Parks maintenance in terms of a shared service opportunity with other agencies, you've already contracted that out. Is there an opportunity to be able to share services with another agency that would reduce your costs? Likely not, maybe, but at least we we had it here as a strategy to investigate. There are opportunities perhaps to look at the way you're providing IT services, whether you're outsource help desk, whether you're, you know, provide IT services to other jurisdictions. That's a way of being able to, you know, use some of your capacity, not that you have a significant amount of capacity in IT, but in restructuring prioritization of IT services, trying to find a way to be able to get some cost recovery on that from working with other agencies as an example. Streets maintenance, you know, again, concepts there, fleet maintenance, shared service opportunities, traffic signal. We we think that based on what we know about how you're already providing services, this area of service delivery alternatives, well, it doesn't mean it shouldn't be investigated. It's a good practice to look at that. We don't know that it's necessarily going to give you the fiscal impact that you're looking at in time to be able to address the gap that you have, because that's the other component that we have to worry about here, too, is, you know, do you have the time to be able to implement some of these ideas that would manifest themselves into certain, you know, to drive sustainability? And the fourth area that is really, you know, then looking at service level reductions. This first one is an important one to just, I want to just spend a little bit of a few more words on. This concept of priority based budgeting is a very valuable tool that a lot of agencies use to make sure that they are looking at their service levels and focusing then when they, especially in an era where they might need to reduce, because all of the other strategies are not implementable in one way, shape or form, to drive the the fiscal impact that you're looking for. Priority based budgeting is a great approach to be able to then take your service levels, identify which ones are the highest priority that need to be maintained versus those that may be on a lower priority, and then ranking them and then identifying them. There's a lot of work that's involved in that, a lot of work on staff, a lot of work on you. You know, it'll be important for you to really take a fresh look at the vision and mission and and, you know, your goals as a community. Do some solid strategic planning to understand where do you want to be? How does that translate then into prioritization of different services? And you might need to engage the community in terms of their perspectives on that. And then from that, then identifying what are some of the the lower level priority services? Now, there's the potential to drive fiscal impact on this because you'll be then you'll understand what your services are top to bottom and then identify the ones that might need to not be funded because there are no other strategies available to address those. But anyways, priority based budgeting is something that's very important, and I would encourage you to think about that. But you don't necessarily have to go down the full priority based budgeting route to do that. Instead, there might be other ways to shortcut that, to have conversations, facilitate conversations, especially around a citywide strategic plan that would talk then about what are the prioritization of the different services that you you provide? So so that's that one area. So other areas that would that would include reduction in service levels, reduce contract for patrol officers, the sheriff's contract, the the fire department, it doesn't have, there's not much there. And, you know, you would have to be looking at browning out a station, and that might not necessarily meet the needs in terms of of coverage. So those are, you know, some areas that we just didn't feel comfortable of putting that on on here. But, you know, parks maintenance in terms of reduced service standards, archicultural events, special events and lifeguard are also some options that we saw based on what you've currently budgeted. But there might have a little bit of a of a lesser fiscal impact there. So let me just wrap up with some some other recommendations and then talk about kind of next steps and and get your feedback in terms of of what we've talked about thus far tonight. You know, we think that you need to implement, you know, your your updated budget policies, and we're going to wrap up this conversation tonight with a discussion about the reserve policy and where you want to go with that. We think that there's a good opportunity for you to solidly get behind and enact a capital improvement policy that basically says that we're not going to invest in new capital infrastructure without a proven method to be able to pay for the operating costs. Otherwise, what you're doing is just you're incurring greater costs long term. It may be something that you want to do today, but if you don't have the ability to pay for it, you need to make sure that your your eyes wide open in terms of of what those are going to be and how you're going to pay for those long term. You know, a revenue policy, you could implement a revenue policy that basically says that we will implement, for example, the 1% property tax increase every year that you have the ability to do unless the long range forecast, you know, indicates sustainability. So it's a practice that some agencies are doing that 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 lock in the concept that we're going to do the 1%, unless it's demonstrated to us that we don't need to do that. So that's that's one option that you have. A couple of other things we would encourage you to look at, you know, doing a citywide strategic plan so that you can have that as a form, as a form and a basis in terms of not only what services are you wanting to provide, but also to help that concept start along with respect to priority based approach in terms of your your budgeting, which is what the last the last bullet is. So tonight, what would be helpful is to maybe hear from you in terms of are there other budget strategies that you may were expecting or would like to see us, you know, do some analysis on? Or are there strategies that are on this list that maybe should just be removed from consideration, either because it doesn't seem like they really make sense to move forward with or or, you know, don't don't drive the 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 level of fiscal impact that could likely really result in in any significant changes? What we will do is we're going to analyze then the feasibility and the fiscal impact for each strategy that that stays. And we will derive, develop a range of budget scenario packages. And what that looks like is the graphic that I showed you before that had, you know, the the four different options, right? Three that are trying to maintain service levels, one that that looks to reduce. We we put it on a spectrum that ranges from revenue centric to expenditure centric costs. And so we would come up with like a scenario packages that maybe one of them is more revenue centric and maybe has a few expenditures, you know, cost reduction strategies with it, to those that are maybe more expenditure centric, you know, trying to mitigate the amount of revenue enhancement strategies that might otherwise need to be implemented. And so we'll put that on a spectrum, we'll we'll create some packages for your consideration to talk about. They're not recommended. What instead they are is really just to show you that there are perhaps different ways to solve this gap. The question ultimately then becomes, what are the strategies that should be included in the in the fiscal sustainability plan? And then we've also committed to working alongside you and your staff in terms of community engagement on the various options that are identified, facilitate conversations about about, you know, what does the community think in terms of these different different strategies? And then ultimately, it'll be up to the council then to determine how to how to move forward. So we've got this graphic that basically just summarizes some of the higher fiscal impact, and we can leave that up as part of this conversation if you'd like, or I'm happy to go back and forth throughout the slide deck. But now, you know, Mayor Clark, I guess I'd like to turn it to you in terms of how you'd like to facilitate feedback from the council on what we've discussed tonight. And if we need more time to think it through this and we reschedule another meeting to go through this, we're happy to to do that with you as well. So Mayor Clark, I'll turn it back to you.
Great, thank you, Steve. Yeah, I think we'll, I already see a couple of hands up, open it up at least first. And then I do like the idea of removing, adding and just having that discussion. So Councilmember Howe?
Thank you. The first question I have has to do with your first column. In terms of the transportation benefit district and the the $50 limit, have you seen this tied to incentive programs to transit? So tax the car, but you get an ORCA card. I'm I'm trying to see if if we did something like this, is there a way to use it as an incentive to modify behavior? And have you seen that work? So that's one question.
Personally, I have not seen that necessarily. I have seen TBD revenues used clearly for capital costs, capital construction costs, right? And so if it was like traffic calming, is that maybe some of the things you're thinking about or?
No, actually, I'm just thinking about as, you know, if you're going to do, if you're going to tax a car, then instead of taxing, you know, if if they have an ORCA card, you know, they don't get their car taxed.
Gotcha, yeah.
So they're incentivized to use transit. So and you may not have an answer to that, but that is something that for many of these things, I would look at, okay, if we did this, could we use this as a behavior modification opportunity? So that would be a general comment that I would just say, you know, throughout the entire process. The other question I have has to do with the photo traffic enforcement. In terms of law enforcement, how do they perceive that? I had a long conversation with one of our officers yesterday, and he was saying that we have many residents that when they get, they don't even pull over anymore. They just keep going. Lights are on, siren, they just go, they just leave. They don't stop.
Yeah. Yeah, that's something we'll take into consideration. We've been working with a couple of agencies that have just implemented them, one on a research perspective, the other included in their fiscal sustainability initiative, and they're implementing their first cameras. I'm also working with a city in Oregon that is that has done that. They implemented theirs just before the pandemic hit. So they didn't quite get very many, you know, in terms of traffic enforcement during the pandemic when everybody was in shutdown. But, you know, we've we've seen a mixed result in terms of what the, you know, law enforcement says with respect to them. Some of them find it very helpful. In other cases, some of them find it that, you know, especially in more affluent communities, they're just going to pay it rather than have to change their behavior, which is kind of the opposite way where you're really trying to do with.
I did have a couple, just another couple of quick questions around that. Have you seen any success with an empty storefront tax?
With, I'm sorry, which one?
An empty storefront tax.
No, and I'm wondering, Sam, if you've seen that?
I have not seen that, Steve, no.
Yeah.
Well, I'm curious about
We'll take a look at that.
Just, yeah, just as a possibility. I'm wondering, is there an opportunity there to encourage property owners of large properties to work with their tenants so that they don't have empty storefronts? So that I don't know that it would generate much revenue, but that's a question. And the other piece that I would ask as a thread through this is that I I would like to make sure that anything that we contemplate, that we have an opportunity for staff to weigh in. Because in some way, like I was being facetious when I said, you know, that that staff were doing like 10 jobs and semi suicidal, that may not be so facetious. I know that it's been really hard on staff, and I'm not interested in in looking at ways to make that their life harder or to increase overtime. I like the idea of retention. I like the idea of, you know, doing, you know, whatever it takes in terms of, you know, trainings and so forth to help provide value and invest in our employees as appropriate. So that would be just another thread that I would have kind of throughout the presentation. But
Yeah, and if I could to that point, this this slide that that I showed earlier, when we do our analysis, we're going to be not only providing you kind of a page that summarizes what the fiscal impact is and how it's calculated, but also, you know, our analysis that we've done in terms of the feasibility, right? And and implementation difficulty. One of those is, you know, the technical operational difficulties or the disruptive impact within the city organization. So we will be having conversations with staff and, you know, preview of coming attractions, Scott and Aaron, we're going to be pulling together probably discussion with your department heads and then other managers to have a conversation about each of these as we do our independent analysis and then bring that forward to you.
Right, and to get their ideas. The other thing that would be, have you ever done something where you've worked in concert with, say, a tiger team or a small, a special purpose commission that's built specifically for just, let's look at our revenue shortfall, where we have residents that come together and also potentially assist with this process? We have many people in the who live in Sammamish still who used We have many people in the who live in Sumamish still, who used to be on the city council or on another city's city council. And they have intellectual capital I'd like to bring to bear in such a way that it's not just us, that it's actually that we're leveraging the expertise that is residents here resident here in Sumamish. So that would be another component that as we look at doing your outreach to residents to understand service levels and so forth, that might be another piece is to bring in expertise that lives right here.
We were blessed with the opportunity to work alongside Rob Carlinsey, the city manager in Kenmore, and assist them with their fiscal sustainability plan. And one of the things that they decided to do as we were starting that project, they recognized there was a gap, is that they formed a fiscal sustainability committee where they had, I think, seven or nine residents on that. And so they, we worked alongside them, we did the independent analysis. We came up with recommendations that we thought would, you know, potentially solve the gap through those budget strategy scenarios, right? And then they also weighed in on that that helped inform the council. So actually, the Association of Washington Cities gave them a kind of a meritorious award for the work they did on that area. So
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yep.
Councilmember Stewart?
If you could go back to your summary slide, that would be super helpful.
Sure.
One thing I'd like to know, you know, kind of looking at some of the just the budget assumptions, because again, I think having a really good forecast of what the gaps actually are is really important, because we're going to be making decisions about potentially raising taxes or lowering services. I want to make sure we're doing it because we really need to. So one of the questions I have, and I'm not really trying to harp on the vacancy rate, but I just know that historically, our vacancy rate has been much higher. What is the average for the region? Like, is 5% even a reasonable estimate? So I'd like to understand that because that is kind of a big number in our in our budget there. I'd also like to know, as you budgeted going forward, it looked like you took the 2021 information and took that forward. So I think that there are probably some additional budget savings that we might be able to look at where we had. Again, that's why I want to kind of understand what happened in that 2020, 2021 timeframe, because there may be some other anomalies that we could smooth out in terms of just reducing some of those budget items. But looking at revenue enhancements, I would be willing to look at a utility tax if the revenues from that were used for our climate action plan. So I'm really pretty keen on if we're going to raise taxes, we need to be able to let people know exactly what they're paying for, what those additional taxes are going to be used for. So that would be something I'd like to understand. I know, Erin, you've provided us some information on what some of those revenues can be based on that. I'd also like to make sure if we did add something like utility tax, that we also have to add a component of assistance in there. So if there are people who are struggling or who happen to lose their job or have something like that, that we have some means to make sure, because that is a very regressive tax when you start imposing those. Or since I know we're imposing them on the utility and not on people, we can't say it has to be tiered, right? Where the first X amount isn't taxed, that would be more fair, but we can't say that. Looking at a transportation benefit district, a licensing fee, again, love the idea of that, tax the cars. I'm big, I love your idea, Councilmember Howe, about trying to find incentives. But I would say if we're going to implement that, that's how we pay for transit, right? And we look at having that be part of the funding model, if not the funding model for the additional transit services. Now, I realize that from a fiscal sustainability perspective, that could be counterintuitive because as we quote unquote, pun intended, drive people to transit, we may be driving down our revenues. But I'm happy to to tackle that problem in the future if that is exactly a problem we create. That would be terrific. Fleet maintenance, can we look at what the cost savings would be there if we start to shift more of our fleet to electric? I know we have a bunch of electric cars. I know a topic came up, I think it was last year, that some of our electric vehicles, they weren't holding their charge anymore, and staff was looking at going back to gas vehicles. But as I understand it, buying a new battery is still way cheaper than buying a whole new vehicle, and there's near zero maintenance on some of the electric vehicles. So I'd love to look at some of the cost savings there. And then I love the idea of photo traffic enforcement, even if it doesn't improve people's behavior, which would be sad if it didn't, but even if it doesn't, if they're breaking the law, I'm really okay with taxing that. I really hope it includes people on their phones, since that not only is a safety issue, but is also a big part of our congestion problem. So I would love to see us look at that. And I'm I'm not opposed to golf course fees. I I don't know how much that would really generate, but it would be interesting to see that. I'm not interested in lowering our services, like on parks or events. Again, our parks are really important to people. We don't, we don't really have a ton of events, and so the events we have are really important to our residents. And I think building more community is important. So I'm I'm not interested in any of those types of cuts. Now, the priority based budgeting is interesting, but that sounds like it could be a huge burden on our staff. So that may be something we have to implement over time, not something we look at doing right away. And I think that is all I've got. The other thing, I guess, I'd like to look at, one last thing, is do you have any data on if we brought on staff specifically for grant funding? I just can't help but shake the notion that there there are a lot of grants out there, and I know it's a lot of work on staff to go after those grants. If we had a full time person who did nothing but looking at grant funding, there are a lot, especially in terms of, I mean, it's not really an operational issue, but for capital projects, there are a lot of opportunities out there. So that would be something I'd also like to look at. I think it's a great list, but it feels really big and feels like we can't really tackle all of these things right away. And again, I don't want to bog staff down so much on trying to look at too many things. You didn't really talk about the business license fee or that head tax on larger corporations. That's something I am interested in, but I don't know. You had it in the low revenue category, so that may not be a really worthwhile venture. And I don't know, just because, you know, I love numbers, I don't know how many vehicles are actually registered in Sumamish. I couldn't find that information. But I did a quick, you know, if every house had two cars, and at $50 a car, that's that's a chunk of change. So I think that's a real consideration. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
So as I was listening to this presentation, I could just feel my stress level going up, like as each slide, it kept going up. I, overall, there's a lot of good things, and my comment is just more overarching. So there's a lot of things that we can do to bring in more revenue and ways that we can shift and control our expenses. I know when we had our one on one talk, we talked specifically about EFER, and I know you had mentioned perhaps not sending, say, four firemen out on a call, and we could just bring it down to three. Were there different ways that we can reduce our EFER costs?
There are. It would be the art of negotiations and discussion with with EFER. I will tell you that standalone fire departments that are part of cities, you know, one of the strategies that some cities have looked at is is reducing the number of firefighters that are on an engine, because the engines have typically historically been rolling to more emergency medical calls, right? And so they don't necessarily have to have the same two in, two out. Fire professionals feel a little bit differently on that, but those are, that's an example of a strategy where fire costs could be reduced. But in your case, you contract for those services with EFER, and so you're going to have to have some conversations with them about that. And some of those may end up being a little bit more systemic changes, you know, throughout all of their operations than it would be just, you know, their impact on Sumamish.
Okay, I just had a couple more questions. I see the in under expenditure control about shifting healthcare costs to employees and reviewing staffing levels. I'm having a hard time with that simply because if you shift healthcare costs, that's just a salary reduction. And, you know, I'm having a hard time also asking staff to do more work when it sounds like they're pretty stretched. My other comment was there was something under an economic development plan, and I know Councilmember Howe talked about town center. I'm seeing all of these are affecting things that we can do right now, which is terrific. I would love to see a model for the town center. I know we would be making assumptions, but if we could just have some basic assumptions, like if there was a movie theater, if there was, you know, some small businesses. I don't know how much Met Market brings in, but some some retail stores, say, the size of Met Market, something to parallel path what could potentially happen in the future. Because all I'm looking at right now is is a bunch of cuts, and we're going to be taxing everybody. And I do feel like having a parallel model, I think, would benefit everybody so that we could have a more, we could feel more positive, I guess, about the future. And I do think that we would need to see that. I think that's all my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, hey, Steve, the one thing I'd like to see, if possible, is on the utility tax revenue enhancement piece, if you could break that out to which utilities would bring in the most revenue.
We will do that analysis and kind of give you some estimates in terms of what what the potential revenue might be for each type. And we'll also incorporate some assumptions as it relates to, Councilmember Stewart, your comment about, you know, what is the reduction in revenues from a full amount if you were to do something that is addresses low income, you know, or, you know, those that are at or below median income level. So we can, we can do some analysis on that.
And then, and then on the service delivery alternatives, I don't recall now, but on the public private partnerships, was that a high, medium, or low rating?
They were all in the the low range, just because of the the concern about, you know, what would actually be incorporated with with something like that? You know, do you have a partner that's even available to to work with at this point? And so, you know, we kind of really rank those more as something that may be more of a long term view, you know, something to always think about in terms of, you know, opportunities for partnerships. But unless there's something tangible that you're thinking of, we just didn't know that there was the potential to drive something like that in the next, you know, three or four years, it's going to give you the impact you need by '27.
Right, it's still a small number, even though. Well, the big one I was thinking is, you know, what we're doing with storm water, adopt a storm water facility and and maintain it, but that, like you're saying, that's a small number then. All right, thanks.
All right, if you don't mind, I'm going to go. So just looking at the list, I think anything with a red star, I would love to scratch, unless staff was like, oh, we really need to look at our organization internally. But other than that, I I kind of agree, like, I don't want to reduce any of their income or, you know, have them shoulder any more costs and, like, eliminating positions and redistributing. I'm not, I think redistributing just means like piling higher, so not necessarily interested in that. I'm not a big fan of the BNO tax. I don't totally understand the business license fees either. And for the transportation benefit district, sounds like a great idea. I don't know if there's, you know, I was thinking of a way like, oh, it'd be great to just do that for the gas cars instead of like electric or hybrid. But then I was like, well, electric cars are insanely expensive and not really available. So then there's like an equity issue. So, yeah, I'm really looking forward to seeing what you guys have, you know, coming back and a little deeper dive into some of them. And again, I wish there was like a very simple, let's do the highest value with the lowest, you know, anything that would affect, but it doesn't seem like it's that easy. So I appreciate it. Councilmember Howe?
Yeah, it's never easy. And so a general comment is just looking at carve outs to just assume that there's anything that would be punitive in any way to, like Councilmember Stewart said, with utility tax or other taxes, anything that could perceived as be as a tax that not dissimilar to the way Bellevue has structured it. So that there's, it's very clear guidelines, it's transparent, it's on the website, it's really easy to understand. The only one thing that they did have on the Bellevue website that I didn't understand is, yes, you can get this discounted, no, you don't have to pay, as long as we don't, as long as we've got sufficient funds. So it sounds like there's a backstop, like it's super cool right up until it isn't. So being being clear about that part would be amazing. That was, I think, the one thing that I was going to say. Oh, one last thing about staffing, just in general, the use of contractors to give you that flexible works, that flexible workforce is, can be useful if you can parachute people in to do specific tasks, and grant writing might be one, because that may not be a full time role. That might be something that you get an expert. And having some experience in in hiring grant writers for the city, there are some people that are phenomenal at it, but you don't need them full time. You just need them for that, that that brief spurt. And the other thing that I would ask, as we look at supporting our tax base in terms of businesses, not a BNO tax, but is there a consultant to help support our business community funneled potentially through the Chamber of Commerce so that we have a way to structure, to to provide a programming, if you will, to to really support our businesses so that they are sustainable, so that they do well? If they do well, we we do better. And as we look at retail in the future, of course, many people are shopping online, and shopping's not going to go away. So that experience will shift and change. And so even though while, you know, malls may be disappearing, not all of them, you'll still have 800 malls in the United States. Right? So they shift and they change and they transform and they turn into an experience. You go there because it's fun and it's and it's a community building opportunity. So there's ways to support and sustain retail, social retail in particular, that could be revenue generating forces for the city. So I want to make sure that we don't, that we don't ignore that, I guess, and to bring in that expertise to help to help us really do a good job of this would be would be worth the investment. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I was wondering about the properties that the city owns. I'm not asking that we have a fire sale or anything, but are there properties that we own that we don't need? And are we planning on, did we look at, are there properties we're planning on purchasing that we also don't need? This could apply to parks. I know, you know, there's a formula for how many parks that each city should have in relationship to its population, and I just wonder if we've reached that point now where we shouldn't be buying any more parks. You know, I think I personally am within two miles of three parks. So and I wonder, you know, that could be the case for many residents as well, that we just put the money into maintenance. So, you know, from, so, you know, have we looked at purchases? Are we planning on purchasing any more parks this coming year and or any other, you know, properties? And perhaps it's something that that we don't, that we stop and, you know, help that process.
If I may, Mayor Clark, the the concept as it relates to surplus properties, Councilmember Lamb, is something that we could, we could look at and work with staff a little bit more to understand what there might be. My my understanding is that there was was not significant amount that that could be really looked at there. But the caveat I always share with every agency I work with on this, remember, that's one time monies unless the sale of that property is somehow manifests itself into an income producing property or a cost reduction property. property or a cost-reduction property. In other words, you're selling off a property that, you know, is blighted or, or whatnot that could be, you know, redeveloped into, you know, a sales tax-producing retail outlet, right? Or something where it's really a drag on your expenditures for maintenance and whatnot, and you sell it so that you don't have to deal with those expenditures in the future. So those are the only caveats that I share with respect to surplus, just differentiating the one-time impact versus the ongoing gap that you have.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. I meant to say also, I have no interest in looking at moving to an in-service model for police or fire. We just did a police services study not that long ago that determined that, in fact, where the way we're doing it is the most cost-effective model, and I think the same is true with EFER. So I just want to say, I don't think there's any reason to look at that. I don't mind, you know, looking at, are there things we want to talk to them about that might be more cost-efficient or effective? I'm fine with that. Also, I don't, I was wondering if you're looking at sort of a long-term model. When I think about fiscal sustainability and I think about opportunities, right, I think about restaurants. I mean, people in Sammamish eat out a lot. We DoorDash a lot, right? And we don't have a lot of restaurants to provide those revenues. So that seems to me like a place where we could see an even bigger increase in our sales tax, and particularly when people are hanging out and, you know, eating and drinking in the city, that provides lots of revenue opportunities as well. And then somebody made a comment, I don't remember who, but they said, these are all things we can do right now. It's my understanding that, like, we don't have to do anything right this minute. I mean, I don't mean, like, in this meeting, but I even mean, like, this year. Like, I think we need to look at these things, and I think we need to have plans. But I don't think we're in danger of fiscal insolvency in the next 12 months. So I think we should be very judicious in working on this, but not necessarily jump into anything too quickly. Now, if we want to increase costs somewhere, I think it would be appropriate for us to make sure we had a revenue source for some of those. But I don't think, unless somebody can tell me otherwise, I don't think there's an urgency to this in terms of this budget cycle, or is that something Mr. City Manager or Aaron, you guys are looking for?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Stewart, I appreciate that point. I think overall, I think what Steve and Sam have laid out is just identifying, we're kind of, to think about it as doing our entire due diligence about identifying what the issue is and looking at everything so that when we get to a point where you all want to say, this is the path we want to go down, you can say with confidence that we have looked at every option, and if we choose not to use some of those options, or you choose not to use some of those, then that's totally fine, but we've looked at it and considered it. I'm going to say this for the entire staff as well. Again, everything has to be on the table, and you can, you know, as policymakers can say, we don't want to do that, and that's totally fine. To your point, Councilmember, and I want to be clear about this, we are not facing a problem at the moment, but recognize that with our current budget and with just straight-up inflation, even if we keep things exactly the way they are, we are still budgeting at higher than the revenues we are bringing in. And we have been sort of using our fund balance to cover that gap. And I think what Steve and his team were laying out is, if we continue to go down that path, that fund balance is going to go away at a date in the future. And, and so that's, this is where we're trying to address it now, so that you don't reach what's sometimes considered to be the fiscal cliff, where all of a sudden you're like, oh, my God, we have to do something drastic. And so that's why this is a process, and I think one of the things that we discussed with Steve and the team is that this needs to be an ongoing conversation. I don't know that we're necessarily looking for you to say, in this next budget cycle, we want to do the following things. If you do say that, that's great, we can work with that. But this is more of a conversation and really thinking about, and Steve knows this, and maybe I'm stealing your thunder, but there's an implementation component that comes once you start saying, this is the path where we want to look and consider these things, then it would be, how, what's the implementation look like? And I think some of the things that have been identified, as Steve was saying, City of Kenmore has done, a community group that's a, that's a sounding board that considers all these things. I know in my past experience in the City of Shoreline, they did a fiscal sustainability committee that included community members, and they spent a lot of time working through those things as well. I think there's a lot of different options. But we wanted to start this conversation now, because there is no burying our head in the sand on this. We have to be realistic about what the future holds and just plan for it so that we don't run into serious problems down the road.
I love that, and I love the, the planning aspect, and again, being eyes wide open, coming up with a plan, but also not being reactionary. So I think that's important. And also, just to concur with what other councilmembers said, I don't think anything that would reduce staff or reduce staff pay should be on the table at this point in time either. So I think we can just take those off the list. It's, it's been trying enough. I don't think we need to add that kind of stress or worry to anybody's plate at this, at this moment in time. Thanks.
All right. So I know we have at least a few ideas and thoughts for you all. Did you have another piece of this, or Aaron, did you for this part?
Not on the overall fiscal strategy. I would like to go back just for a moment on the calendar, just so we could, it's the last slide that was included in the packet, just kind of gives us a frame for these discussions so we can see what the budget calendar and discussions are like. So let me pull that up real quick.
Great. Thank you. And Steve and Sam are staying on, right? They're involved? Cool.
We'll be here until you want to kick us out.
So just as a reminder, for the 2324 budget development process, this is the overarching calendar. So we're at the June point right now, where we've kind of given a brief overview of prior activities. We're having our discussion on the policies and further discussion on the overall sustainability strategy, the modeling activity. So that's happening in the June timeframe there, that June 14, June 28. That's going to lead it into, after the August break, there's going to be the September sessions that are going to be more of the detailed department-level reviews on the preliminary budget. So you're going to see those, it'll be three different sessions on that, September 13th, 27th, October 11th. So those are opportunities to hear more of the detailed department-level information on what's included in their 2324 budget proposals. This slide particularly shows the filing deadlines as well, so the things that are signified and bold there are the statutory requirements, so there are statutory public hearings that the state requires before council can pass their budget. And so those are, those dates are on there just as a way for folks to look forward and see when those dates are coming up on the council's calendar. So you'll notice a lot of that is in the fall, as you get into October, November, before final council deliberation on the 2324 budget and then potential passage. All right. And that's all I have for an overview. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And just to add on that, what we don't have listed in here, because it's not technically part of the budget process, would be when we come back in the fall with management partners for round two of this conversation, and then what the public process looks like. That's still, we'll work through that as we get a little bit closer. I would also want to recognize that you all are going to have two more colleagues by the time we get to this point. So we know we have some educating to do in, at rapid pace for those new folks, and that's totally fine. And so I think we've, we have a little bit of time to try to do that, and so that we can make sure and have a robust discussion again when we get to that point. I think there's been a lot of information that you all have sort of taken in tonight, and I know the presentation will make available to all of you, so you can take a look at it, and we can do follow-up with that if there are questions, if you want to know more. I think Steve and Sam are obviously prepared to respond to that as we sort of help with the learning process, so that when we get to that next point, sorry, Steve and Sam, if I'm stealing your thunder for next steps, but that we get a little more direction and start to focus in a little bit more. And Steve, Sam, take it away if that, if you want to add on to that as part of our next steps.
What he said. No, I think, I think we're good. And I think, you know, maybe what we'll do is, as we do our analysis, we'll focus on those that are higher, medium. We heard, you know, it seemed like many of you, if not all of you, were saying, okay, let's not, let's not go down the path of staff reductions at this point. We will keep them on a list that's on the side, but we won't do our primary analysis on that. We'll be looking at a lot of those other strategies and focusing on those, so.
And I did have one clarification. For management partners, did you suggest the 25%, the three months? Because I thought there was a discrepancy between...
So last year, we had, we had recommended, or last year, October, we had recommended the two-month level, and that was based primarily on GFOA, as well as the fact of, you know, when we looked at your property tax, you know, it doesn't, it's not cyclical, it's not, it's not volatile from a revenue perspective. Totally get where Aaron's coming from in terms of wanting to make sure that you have money in the piggy bank, but I think that's a cash flow issue. I think your reserve policy needs to be set at a prudent level that on an annual, year-to-year basis, that you have the right reserves available to address whatever it is that you need. So anything between, we believe that, you know, two- to three-month level would be prudent and appropriate for your agency, so if that's helpful.
Great. Thank you. And I didn't know if we wanted to go back and try and get something official, if we just want to put that on to the next, because I know we were all waiting kind of for the presentation, so.
I think it's entirely up to council how you want to proceed there. We're happy to wait and bring this up again. I think ultimately, just, just to be clear, right now, our reserve dollar amount is well above what the, any of these policies would dictate. And so really, it's about identifying how much of that would be, this is not right, the right term, but untouchable versus how much you might consider. And as an example, part of the TCIP that you're all considering is allocating some of that money to be able to implement the TCIP over a six-year window. So you're carving out some of that money off the top as well. So again, part of this is just saying, as you make those decisions, that if we're going to, we want to take some measure and say, we're going to hold that aside, and it's not touchable for other things. So that's just part of that ongoing conversation. So we can pick this up in the fall, and it's still totally fine to identify that policy when we get to that point.
Cool. Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. One of the things, I feel like a broken record on this one, but I do think, you know, when you bring up the TCIP, I do think in this budget cycle, we should be looking at potentially bonds for those capital projects as opposed to being a huge drag on our general fund. If we have large capital projects, we should really be looking at that. Again, interest rates are rising, but they are probably not going to be this low again for a really long time. And if they do go lower, we can refinance. So there's not really a downside to, to doing that, and then looking at, what do we want to do for that source of revenue to pay that off? And I think that's where we can look at things like a utility tax potentially or something like that. But I, I'm not a huge fan of, of just sucking off of the general fund all the time to pay for those capital projects. Again, it almost feels, well, easier to say, we're going to borrow this money for this project, and this is how we're paying for it. And then people have something they can see that they get on the other side, and that makes it, I think, more palatable, right, for, for the, for the community to know that it's not just, I'm paying taxes and then I never know where it goes. It just goes off into oblivion. So that would be something that I would actually like to see potentially in the upcoming budget cycle if we're, if we need that kind of revenue. And I do think we have, for a particular purpose, for some of these bonds, I think we do have councilmanic authority to be able to do those, so. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. So council, unless you want to make some sort of vote on the reserve, I think that's it for this evening. Cool. All right. Oh, go ahead. Oh, yeah, Councilmember Trine. Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, ma'am, but just a slight point of privilege here. Thanks. So I'm, I'm going to have to meet with the Kokoni Salmon Group coming up here, and so if you don't mind, just, they asked that, that the council makes a decision if we want to be a part of reviewing a task, number three, which is, they're actually going to develop a model for an ordinance for light abatement on the shorelines. So I'm seeing a lot of head nods, and so I've talked to the city manager about that today. Today? Yeah, today. What day is it? And, and so we do need to get community, staff involved, and they would be the one that would review it and look at it. But we, I think we should be a part of it. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. That's awesome. All right. Well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
We don't have to make a motion? All right.
Don't think so.
All right. We're good to go. See you. Good night. Yeah, thank you, Steve and Sam and Aaron.